I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marty, do roll call attendance, please.
Mary Jo Radmanowski.
Here.
Mary Jo Radcliff.
Here.
Patty Jacobson.
Here.
Laurel Mead.
Amy Huckman.
Here.
Dan Homer-Cutter-Crawford.
Here.
Scott Martin.
Here.
Thank you. And the meeting's been noticed to the public according to open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now at public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the board? Okay, I make a motion to move 8.1, 8.2 right after board commendation. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. We'll start right out with our community engagement and we have Brad and Ann Eberhardt with us today.
Fantastic. If you don't mind coming up here, we'd like to give you a thunderous round of applause where you're in the center. I didn't have to read, I didn't think about this. The board would like to recognize Brad and Ann Eberhardt for their incredible generosity in the Black River Falls field. So I'm going to give you a long story and then the short part first and then I'm going to go a little deeper. The short part is, in addition to the beautiful facility that was built, as you know if you have any children who play baseball, softball, a batting cage is an essential piece for that area. And the Eberhardt's took it upon themselves to purchase it and to help put it all together. And that batting cage was 100% donated by the family. And obviously their daughter is one of them that uses it quite heavily. However, it is something that is just a really, really, really nice one that will serve the community for many years to come and so we're very appreciative. On top of that, Brad's in a little unique situation that he also works for Huffman Construction who did the donation of the field. But Brad was the point person for so many of the minutia of details. When you think about building a new facility, you can quickly think of the big structure, but then there's little things like garbage cans, like who's stacking the concessions and all those little details that all need to be worked out. And Brad acted as kind of the project manager over the whole thing. And just because he spent so much time around sports and wants so badly for it to be the beautiful facility that it is, he really thought of so many details and was so instrumental in putting in his own blood, sweat and tears to help it, but also communicating with everyone else that it could be done really well. And just so very, very, very proud of that facility. So we're very appreciative of the family's donation and of Brad's time in taking care of all those little details. So thank you very much. A round of applause.
Dr. Sears can just put a comment?
Yes.
And again, appreciate the commendation. Our part was such a small part compared to the donation of the Huffman Family Gate. We're just happy to do it so the kids can enjoy it. We just thought it'd be a...Jim and I had a conversation, so we gotta put a batting cage in. And I said, "I'll put the batting cage in if you do the..." Well, obviously he said, "Done deal."
Which is nice of you to say, however, how many other people in the community did not say, "Hey, I'll just put a batting cage." So I'm just saying, that was silly.
And then Jim Huffman said, "You take care of getting it built."
And that's a labor of love, I hope. Can I get a picture of the three of you together? Hopefully a labor of love that you have one more season to enjoy, right?
Oh, many more seasons.
Well, your daughter, I meant, sorry. There we go. Awesome. Thank you very much. We really, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And we did, thank you very much. We did recognize the Huffmans last spring.
Yep.
But this was really, really exceptional, so thank you.
Alright, thanks.
It's not feeling like softball weather right now, but it will be back next spring, right? Next spring. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move right on to 8.1, the Houghman Field Trips. And we have Mr. Chambers and Sarah here, too.
So there was one that was added late. Did you put the document in for FFA? Or can...okay. Which one do you want first? Since yours are listed, let her go first, okay? Come on down.
Do you want me here?
Sure.
Okay. Alright. Well, I believe, I don't know if you guys received the proposal as well, but once again, I am asking for your approval to take Black River Falls High School students to Italy and Greece. It would be this, not this summer, but the next summer. I usually go on the odd summers. So that is what I'm looking for your approval for. And a lot of it is spelled out in that proposal there for you. If you have any questions for me, I believe since I've been back in Black River here, I've had two very successful trips to Europe with students. And again, there's a food focus, so that's just a passion of mine. The students really enjoy those pieces of the trips as well. So we're going to a market, we're going to do a cooking class, and then we're going to go tour an olive grove while we're there.
I don't know if any of you followed this past summer's trip on Facebook, but I would imagine you get home when you're ready to sleep for a month because the agenda that is followed is so aggressive to get to see as many things as possible in as few days as possible. How many kids did you take with you this past year?
About 21.
Awesome. And neighboring district also, right? It became kind of a little regional?
It was actually four districts that I coordinated. And I work with this company, so a lot of their trips are all kind of prepackaged and I work with them so that we get a very specific food-focused theme. And so we're doing the same thing again this year. And Holman is also going with us again.
Great.
They liked the agenda so well last time, so.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Sounds fine. Is there a motion to approve the trip to Europe?
I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Any discussion or questions?
So this is next summer, it's the fall?
Correct. I like to plan them out far enough in advance so it gives students the ability to...it's a lot smaller monthly payments that way as well. But this trip is a really pretty reasonable trip for what we have packed into it.
And they can leverage Christmas and birthdays for...
Absolutely.
A little longer time.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're going to...
Thank you.
Giving our students that opportunity, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming. And then you did not find it in your packet, but I think Mr. Chambers can give some raise for you?
Yeah. So before I talk to this one, I'm going to mention that November 17th, we have one of our high school teachers, Samantha Walker, the choir teacher, leaving for Austria. If you recall, last fall, I believe we were invited to a summit at the school that I first started teaching at in Austria to take some students to learn about and work on a project, a week-long project with an artist there, overcoming prejudices. It escaped me there for a second. And so they're bringing in students from about six different countries and we were the only one flying over the ocean, the rest of them are European countries. So they're leaving for about 10 days there. That trip is all ready to go and they're excited to go. This is not quite as far, this is an annual trip that Brad Markhart takes down from the FFA National Convention. And I apologize for not getting in sooner due to some changes in our processes, oversight on our part. But he has done this for many years. It's paid for by the FFA. And the group that he's taking this year are three students and Brad, they will be chartering a bus with other districts. And so he's taken his van over and parking it, I think he said, in Blair Taylor and then they hop on a charter bus, takes them down to Indianapolis and they have a lot of very good keynote speakers. They have leadership workshops that they go to. They're going to be touring an agribusiness down in Indianapolis area. And when they come back, they present to the FFA alumni, to the chapter here. And they have a daily journal that they do while they're on the trip that Brad then goes over with them when they return. So we're looking for your approval and this is leaving next week.
Next week?
Yeah. So if you deny it, I will have to tell Brad some sad news, but no pressure.
No pressure.
No pressure.
We've never had an issue with anything on those trips that he's gone on.
No.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Chambers?
Field cost must be for Brad's van.
Yeah, that, well, actually, right. You can ignore the $18 actually because I had to put a number in there to make this thing print out this afternoon. Brad's taking his own van.
The writing in the luggage rack.
Yeah. Share the costs with the other districts for the charter bus.
We have a motion to approve the FFA field trip.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any...all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You're going to Minneapolis.
Indianapolis.
Minneapolis.
Quite a detour.
So we have...
We have Student Senate next.
Actually, it's in the middle of the screen, so you can look right up here. So this doesn't necessarily amplify you in the room, but it makes it so the camera picks it up.
Well, hello, we are Student Senate and we are now newly elected. So right here, we got our new president, Zoe Del Cerro. And then I'm obviously returning from last year as the vice president. I mean, I'm kind of happy for it.
So are we.
I mean, it feels great to be back. Then we also have Secretary Madison Shuchanic and we also have Communications Director Haley Klein. And now, last year, I'd say was a big success for Student Senate, although we did have our ups and downs as most probably years have gone, but we are probably going to, I hope, to double down, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for you as well, to double down on communications with our student body and to help them, well, meet at least demands and needs and see a way, a bargaining chip to appease both sides and to not create any sort of discomfort. And to also have more development of civic skills, academic excellence, and a positive and future-oriented atmosphere for our students. But so far, with our Student Senate, we have actually made some great strides so far.
Thanks, Peyton. Last week was an example of this. The Waseekwasek and the Student Senate co-wopped and set up the Ho-Chunk Appreciation Night, which also happened to be our homecoming, which I thought was awesome. I don't know why we don't do that every year. But there was double ball in lacrosse. I took part in double ball and I broke a couple nails, but it was really fun. And Marlin White Eagle spoke, which I thought was amazing. They sang the flag song and there's also a dance exhibition at halftime with many Black River Falls and Wisconsin-Dell students participating. So that happened this past weekend. And also the Green Team, which is a new club that was founded a couple of years ago, I think my sophomore year. We've been looking towards solutions to make our school a certified green school, which means that we're federally recognized and we get certain, I think, financial benefits, if I'm not mistaken. And Ms. Knodel is the biology teacher in our school, or one of the head biology teachers, and she's the one leading it. And we're looking towards making more vegetarian or like more healthy alternative options for school lunch. We don't have any concrete ideas. We've met with Connie Seber a couple of times and she said it's going to be difficult, but if we keep persisting, I think we can actually make some headway. And that's all we have for today.
Any questions for that? If I could, just a moment, there were several people that were talking about it earlier and I definitely heard it over the weekend, how many people agree with you that they thought Friday night was a fantastic community event. They really thought that there was a lot of thought and planning that went into it and it just showed, provided an opportunity for so many different people to feel celebrated and recognized, whether they were athletes or court members or community members or, I mean, there was some parents who were deeply moved by their ability to get involved in that night, too. So that was fantastic. And I would like to recognize for the board as well, Tony Berger is the Student Senate advisor this year and was also very instrumental in coordinating Friday night's activities. And he will say, "With the help of a lot of others," as all good activities definitely take a team to take off, it also takes an idea guy who is willing to run with it. And so it just really was a really nice community celebration. So thank you for you guys and your part in that as well.
And the weather cooperated?
The weather did.
It was very nice. Did a good job.
Thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay, but we moved you ahead so you can get home to do your homework if you'd like.
That was an order.
Yeah. Okay. We have Mary Ann here?
Yes.
Next, we have a presentation just about childcare.
Mary Ann Torquesson is here and she has really been a driver behind the Community Childcare Task Force. Jill Collins sits on it for the district for a special. But Mary Ann would love to share with us a little bit of the most recent information from that group, so.
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm trying to save a little...yeah, I don't have one for everyone. I'm trying to save paper a little bit. So that's just a bit of a visual of some of the work that we have been doing as a task force team. And it gives you just a snapshot of some of the issues that we're seeing in our community and what we're faced with, so.
So childcare is really a workforce issue. It's a family issue in our community. And as we're looking at this, we're looking at countywide in Jackson County. And how this all got started was with a lobby conversation at one of the businesses. A couple of the presidents of organizations were talking in the lobby and were saying, "You know, are you starting to see people not returning to the workforce after they've had children because they're struggling to find childcare? Are you seeing absenteeism, people struggling to get to work on time, those types of things?" And that conversation was, yes, they were. And so we took that a little further and had a couple of conversations about it. And that has led to our current task force, the Jackson County Childcare Task Force Team. And so this slide shows who our members are at this point. Chris Hardy is joining us from the Seven Rivers Alliance. We have representatives from Health and Human Services, from the Children's Learning Village and Black River Childcare Center. We have a nice business representation from DNS, from Milis Transfer, Jackson Electric, Regal Beloit. Jill is with us from the school district. Myself and Bob Staple has joined us from Black River Memorial Hospital. So we have a nice business group then, as well as the childcare centers. We have Elaine, who is an in-home provider at this time, but she is working at becoming a center-certified provider. And then we have resources from the Department of Children and Families. And we also have Dottie Lillo from Childcare Partnership. And they work with providers in our county on the regulations and certification, that sort of thing. So our group has really expanded since that original conversation. So we wanted, it was really important for us to get a local look. Chris Hardy with the Seven Rivers Alliance and the Childcare Partnership Group in the La Crosse area had done a tri-county study with Juneau, Jackson and Monroe Counties, looking at childcare struggles that they were having there. There were things like, you know, terms like a childcare desert. What's a childcare desert and how that impacted us? And we'll get to that in a little bit. But our group took those results from those three counties and we thought, you know, we really need to get a good look at what's going on just in Jackson County. Juneau County and Monroe County are very different in a number of ways from Jackson County. So we wanted to do a little bit of research and find out what our families and our employers were facing. So we drafted a survey. We distributed through press releases. We reached out to the employers in our community and asked them to share this with parents, with other adults that are caring for, you know, their children and their family, whether it be fostered children, and asked them to complete our survey. And so these questions were really geared for that working parent or working caregiver. And the survey was open for three weeks and we were pleasantly surprised with about 120 completed surveys from this kind of grassroots. You know, we really haven't had any budget dollars to this point. So then we wanted to look at, okay, what is going on in Jackson County? And from that parent and caregiver survey, we found that only 43% felt that their current childcare arrangement fully met their family's needs. Several respondents talked about how they were concerned with the quality, the affordability of childcare. They preferred to have their children at a center, but they were struggling to find that. Many were relying on family and friends, which was making it difficult to maintain their work schedule. We heard comments like, "I don't have a guaranteed sitter. Kids need, you know, the children need a schedule and something consistent and they don't have that." Another comment was, "Some days childcare is not available and we scramble to find a sitter. Both my spouse and I have missed work due to childcare issues." And we all understand the importance of child development from that zero to five years old. This is one of the most vulnerable populations that we have in our community and these kids are being juggled from place to place. You know, parents talked about when they're tucking their kids in at night, "Well, Mommy, where am I going to go tomorrow?" They just don't know. So the families were forced to choose less than their desired placement, excuse me, for their children. So as we dug into the results, we found that 68% of respondents were unable to work overtime due to childcare arrangements. And oftentimes, overtime comes very last minute. When they go into work that day, they don't always, in every environment, know if they're going to have to work overtime. So a lot of overtime has to be turned away. That 68% also have been absent from work due to childcare issues. 55% are late for, have been late for work. Over 50% were unable to work to their full capacity due to the stress and concerns about childcare arrangements. So that really speaks to the concern of the parent when they are working or the caregiver when they are working. They're not able to work to their full potential. They're worried about their children. They're trying to arrange childcare. You know, look at the winter we had last winter and all the scrambling that has to go on at the last minute to take care of their children. So the childcare center may close, but oftentimes the employer does not close. So that's always an issue as well. And then over 48% said that their children were cared for by family members and friends. 85% spend time on the job making alternate childcare arrangements. So that's where that real lack of working to my full potential at work comes into play. And of that group, over 50% said they spend at least one hour each month on this. 56% have no option if their children become sick and has to leave daycare. 55% have to use more than one provider for childcare. As we looked at and dug into some of that survey, some families are using as many as four and five different providers for their children. So they're really struggling at times to find appropriate care. So it narrowed down to those top three concerns, cost, availability and quality care. And to make it even more difficult, the centers are really struggling to recruit and retain childcare workers. There was a study done and reported on public radio and it said that the average wage of a childcare worker in Wisconsin is $10.33 an hour with no benefits. No paid days off, no sick time, no benefits of any kind. And this is classified as a poverty wage. So what we find with the childcare worker shortage is, on average, childcare teachers are more educated than the typical Wisconsin worker. 17% of the staff are eligible for and receive health insurance provided by their employers. So only 17% of them in the entire state. And only half of them receive paid days off. And the struggle is, if the center is going to work to increase the wages of their staff, that has to be passed on to parents. And parents are paying close to $200 a week per child for childcare, depending on the age. We have a young mom at the credit union and she works in Black River at our main office. She has to drive to Oseo every morning to take her little guy for childcare and she's paying $200 a week for that. So there's definitely a need, and hers is not the only story like that. The other troubling news is that in-home certified providers have declined by 90% in the past 20 years in our county. So in 1999, we had 42 home providers. Today, we have three. Three. So we haven't dug into a ton about why. A big part of it is the regulatory environment. That has changed over the last 20 years. And just the capacity to be profitable is getting more and more difficult. You know, there's studies that are showing this $200 a week is getting to be more expensive than college tuition. So we were doing some number crunching and it's, you know, some families are paying well over $13,000 a year for childcare, so.
I think there are some federal programs that provide childcare support.
Yes, there are, for income-eligible people. Yes, yep.
But they would definitely have to be regulated, childcare centers, in order to...
Correct.
So finding the three that are so regulated would be a significant challenge.
You know, one of the other pieces we've talked about is, you know, our employers and we'll talk about that a little bit in the employer survey. What are they doing, you know, to help offset the cost? And many of them are offering programs like, I call it cafeteria, what is the right word? Section 125 Plan. But again, you have to have a regulated provider or a provider that is running it as a business, you know, declaring income, that sort of thing, so. So availability of care, in Wisconsin, 38% of the ZIP codes in Wisconsin are considered childcare deserts. 51% in our western region are identified as childcare deserts. And summing it up, a childcare desert basically is, for every one certified or regulated slot you have, you have at least three children that need that slot. There's some criteria such as you have to have at least 30 children in your area, ages zero to five, you have to have working parents. So Jackson County is definitely one of those childcare deserts. And again, here's the statistics from '99 until today. So how does this impact our community? Well, our task force happened to have a meeting on June 30th of 2018. And just that day, Kathy Rumsey from Human Services had gotten three phone calls from three different people that had been offered jobs in Jackson County. They needed to know if there was childcare available before they would accept the position. So it's turning into a retention barrier or a recruitment barrier also for our business communities. If the employees they're trying to bring in cannot find childcare, they're not going to take the position. This decreases our opportunity for growth as a community and only increases the skilled worker shortage. We've all heard about how difficult it is to find skilled workers, to retain people. This just exacerbates that. And it stunts growth in our community. So we wanted to put some numbers to this. What really is the economic impact in Jackson County? And Chris Hardy at the Seven Rivers Alliance and his staff took our results and put some numbers to it. And in Jackson County, childcare-related lost productivity is costing us over $2.5 million a year. So we had the parent or caregiver feedback and it was important for us to check in with our employers. Were they hearing or feeling the same thing that the parents were? And the statistics were very, very similar. 75% have experienced employee absence. 91 have experienced the employee tardiness. 62% have experienced the refusal of overtime due to childcare issues. And 2/3 state that their employees cannot work to their full potential. We asked an open-ended question. Do you have issues with childcare? Or do you have any employees? And there's no issues with childcare. Not a single employer said, "We have no issues with childcare." So over 95% feel that there's a critical link between childcare and economic development. And the top concerns for the employers again were availability, affordability and quality. And then they added the shift coverage. None of our providers provide shift coverage for staff. So they're finding that more qualified workers are staying home due to no childcare and they talk about the shift work. Their staff are working first, second and third shift and there's limited childcare available for drop-off. And then the lack of childcare adds to the workforce shortage and has a negative impact on productivity. So what's the task force doing with this? So we had all this data. Now, how have we honed in on our focus? Well, our focus is to create a system that's going to increase the availability and affordability of quality options for children, whether that be at the in-home provider or in a center. The next thing we want to work on is increasing the wages of childcare workers. At one of our meetings, we had the three centers there and we said, you know, if you were able to be staffed to your full potential with the bricks and mortar that you have right now, how many additional slots, is the word they use, would that open for Jackson County? And they said, we came up with 20. So that staffing shortage is, is very, very big. But the low wages and the lack of benefits is very detrimental to recruitment efforts. So we're looking at a cooperative model with a shared services hub. And this is a methodology that we are researching. We're working right now on developing a business plan for this model. It's still to be determined if this is the right model. We feel that, that this can really work. So how this will work is that we would have a cooperative that would be kind of like an umbrella over any regulated provider in the county, whether it be from a home or from a center. It's important that the regulated provider is, is offered the opportunity. And then we would bring in this shared services hub. We're just calling it the hub. And we're working with, with WICA, the Wisconsin Early Childhood Association, to see if they would be able to provide that hub for us. This mimics the work that they're doing in Vernon and Monroe Counties. They're currently running a shared services model there and it's been going very well. And the things that the hub would provide would be things like licensing compliance, payroll support, the fee collection. Many providers have to, are running, you know, with uncollected fees from families. Any HR help that they could get. And then the professional development piece. What's that continuing education support that they need for all of their staff and mentoring? And then they also have the capacity to help the centers run this ASQ Ages and Stages program. And what that program does is it monitors the growth and development of the children in the providers. And when there is a need identified, they can help make referrals so that the children get the access to the referrals that they need. So our next step as a task force, we're working on developing a business plan and we're working to collaborate with other agencies to outline this cooperative alliance. We're working with the Wisconsin Early Childcare Association. We're working with the UW Center for Cooperatives at UW Madison and the Cooperative Network. The Wisconsin Shared Services Network is helping us. And then the Department of Children and Families. So, the Governor's Secretary of Department of Children and Families heard about our work and the secretary and entire staff came and met with our task force probably six months ago to see the work that we were doing. And they're very excited about this, this task that we're working on. And the piece that they like is that we're business-led. It's a group of businesses that have come together to see what we can do to solve this issue. We just had a conference call with them a couple weeks ago with WICA and DCF and Jill and I from the task force. And the state is applying for some grant dollars and they would like us to partner with them. So our task force is working on gathering our in-kind contributions and what resources we are devoting to the work. And if they receive this grant, they're hoping that we could possibly be a pilot in the state that they could mimic in other communities. So, the state is very excited about the work that we're doing. So, what do we need? Well, we need to continue to research grant opportunities. Grant opportunities are going to kickstart us at the beginning to help us get things going. We may be looking for community support and match for grant applications. We need some resources to assist with grant writing. None of us on the task force are grant writers and we all have other work that we're trying to do and other jobs. So, at times it maybe feels like it's a little bit slow-moving for us, but we're, we're doing what we can. So, and then we're also going to need grant dollars to support solutions. We are working to grow partnerships in our community. It's going to really take our community to help with this too. The business community, foundations, organizations. And then we want to put an effort out there to try and touch these unregulated providers, these in-home providers and see if we can get more of them. I believe in-home is licensed, licensed or certified so that they can then open up more of those slots for the families in Jackson County. So, to this point, that's the work that we're doing. We're excited that we have a direction and that we're working on it. And all of our task force members and community members that we've been talking to have been pretty excited about the work that we're doing. So, we plan to keep moving forward and see what we can get solved. Any questions?
It's nice that you might be getting those grant dollars working with the state because I would think that would be a big barrier.
Right, right. And they're applying again for the entire state. So how much we would get is, is still a question at this time and if they even get the, the grant award. So...
When we've had school board trainings at the state level, some schools have presented some workshops on how they got childcare going within the school system even for their employees as well as outside people running it year-round by collaborating with businesses and, and getting that kind of support. So we, we, you know, our employees are part of this too that have that issue.
Right.
And so we do recognize that it's really important for that. As part of that, the people that you're working with now, is Western Dereland Childcare Partnership still in that too then?
Yes, yes. Dottie is still working with us. So, yeah, she's very active and is helping us in many ways.
Certainly that would be the, from my experience, the, the lower income level particularly that they, they are there to help too.
Right, right.
Well Jill has filled us in occasionally about this and we've had some discussions at board development about the direction and the support the school should give as well. So we really appreciate the detail that you've provided and the path ahead. Very impressive. Mary Ann, thank you.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you.
I have a, I'll afford a question.
Oh, okay.
Which I do come up with from time to time. So I understand the focus is that they want to keep people working. There are people that work because they have to and they'd like to be home with their parents. Is there any consideration for that in terms of how to help people stay home and take care of their kids? Or is it pretty much a workforce issue that you're...
At this point, it's a workforce issue. And it's a way to help those families who are working, you know, fill that need that they have.
So are there any kind of preliminary ideas about which, what you think you might be able to get from the school district? What kind of help you're looking for from us or how we can be helped contribute?
At this point, no. What we want to do is get through our business plan, find out, okay, what are all of those I's that we have to dot, T's that we have to cross? What are all the needs that are out there? We're going to spend some time talking with the centers about, okay, what about this model enthuses you? What makes you happy or what makes, you know, what, what are your needs going to do? So we're still really in that development piece. It could vary, it most likely will come to reaching out to our community to say, okay, here's, here's everything we need. Does anyone have any way to help?
We realize it's a problem.
Yes, yep, yep. You know, you think about the children in that young age and if, you know, the, the screenings and the monitoring of the ages and stages can help better equip them when they get to school, that could be a big potential piece as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll move on to gifts and grants.
Just a couple this evening. First of all, Mr. Bill Rakestro joining the trumpets to the middle school band. And so we are very appreciative of that. The value was about $75 to $100. And then second, Amy Hunter, who is our new mental health navigator, who's had grants that we received. She is applying for a grant which would provide for some initial screening tools for students that may potentially be in need of mental health services as well as some professional development as to how to use those tools with any, with the reliability with which they are required. So that is a grant for $1,800.
Shelly Ann, a question about this. So this program is a granted program that we're going to be doing now?
It is a screening. So screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment is what it boils down to. So yes, it is, I wouldn't say it's a program. It's a tool that would be available to a staff member if they had concerns about a child. So I would anticipate perhaps our counselors are the ones that are administering the tool or Amy Hunter herself perhaps or the school psychologist.
Because I read, I read through that and I had some concerns. I didn't know if it was anything for the board approval or not, but I had some concerns about this, if this was going to be the training that was used at multiple people in our school district, teachers or whatever.
What, do you have specific concerns?
I do. So I read through it and I thought, I would like to come back to it at another time when we had more chance. But what you're asking people to do with, you know, two days of training is to a pretty important evaluation that counselors will do after they've done 5,000 to 7,000 hours of training. And so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the skill you can get in two days in order to evaluate, tease out who needs interventions and who they want.
And so, not to play devil's advocate, but currently we have nothing and our counselors are asked to decide who may need additional treatment.
They've had some training in that though, correct?
Our social worker. Our social worker may have, but school counselors, I don't know how much. So I'm seeing that there's people in the district already serving that role without even two days of training, you know, specifically for that. This wouldn't be widespread, everybody in the district received training? It would be more a resource tool.
But there are requirements that go with it and that's why I say I think it's more than just, well, this is a great thing. Because I think if you want to do something, you want to do it correctly, absolutely appropriate tools. And I'm not sure this is an appropriate tool. That's what I'm saying.
We can certainly talk about that.
Okay.
So she is applying for the grant at this time. She has not yet received it. And so...
So is there a motion to, or did you, did we talk about the other trumpet and all that stuff? Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve the gifts and grants presented?
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Now wait a minute, we just approved the grant.
For the application.
The grant application. We have not received it yet, so we can certainly have that conversation.
I'm abstaining just because I want to...
Okay, okay. Got that. Okay, so motion carried with one. Okay, the annual meeting agenda, you've received that. And we just have a change that we'll be meeting here in the boardroom.
Yep. Hope that works for everyone.
Hope it's enough.
Oh, I'm sorry, another grant. I apologize to go backwards. And I think you guys are already aware of this one, but I just wanted to be clear because we just received the notification. It came in after I had the packet ready for you. Several of you were aware of that transition readiness grant that we had applied for last year after the state budget was approved. They had more dollars in that pot and so they sent out new notification letters that our allocation was increased to $35,834. There's a grant that Tammy's been working very closely with some of our special education teachers on and it is the transition readiness grant, talking about our older special education students and how they transition into successful life after school and employment and living and all of that stuff. So you have approved the initial grant. I just wanted to make you aware that after the state budget, there were additional dollars that were allocated for that. And so, we're excited to do that work.
And the annual meeting, we'll get back to that agenda. That's a week from tonight. Any discussion? We don't need to approve that. It's already out and done. Okay. We're now at focus on purpose and we have our K5 science presentation.
Well, we are here to talk about elementary science to give you an update. And so, just to remind you, we'll talk elementary tonight. Next board meeting, we'll talk middle school. And the following, we'll talk high school. So we get to focus on science for a while. So the first slide shares the members of the committee. We had representation from K5, but we have some fabulous ladies that not only helped put the presentation together, but also decided to come and join us.
I'm Emily Stewart. I work at Red Creek Elementary and I'm a second grade teacher.
I'm Tara Prestwood. I work at Forest Street Elementary and I am a first grade teacher.
All right. So I told them that I would help with the standardy curriculum-y stuff and then they get to share lots of fun stuff that the, about how much kids love science. So, tonight we're just going to go through some of the big ideas, the work that the department's been working on, some highlights, and then some next steps as well. So, just kind of paint the picture of where the state is going in science and so us as well. This is kind of their long-term vision and goal for science instruction. I won't read it to you, but really thinking about the greater application of science in long-term learners. So there really are kind of three layers to the science standards. And so really thinking about, the first one, science and engineering practices, that really is the, kind of the, the doing of science, the actions that students take on. The disciplinary core ideas is what we would typically think of as the standards, the content that students are going to be learning. And then those cross-cutting concepts are really kind of the trends that go across all the standards, whether it's life science or earth-space science. It really is, there's, we'll take a look at those in just a second. So to give you an example of some of the science and engineering practices, those are some specific examples from each of the grade levels. And I don't know if you ladies have anything to share about those particular practices, Some comments from teachers, just with the addition of these, then our typical life science, earth science, and physical science. Adding these standards in there really just kind of up the ante for hands-on and real-world application, et cetera. So you can kind of see what those look like there. And so, again, that's the fourth piece with the other standard strands running K-12. So there is always some exposure to life science, earth science, and physical science throughout the elementary grades. So then these are those cross-cutting concepts that I mentioned. As you can see, they're real big picture ideas that no matter what content area or what grade level a student is in, they are looking at these things over, overtime. So really building that conceptual knowledge. Things like patterns. We study a lot of life cycles in the early grade levels, really looking at what those continual patterns are like. It might be a different, different from an apple to a butterfly, but it is a similar pattern as well as the cause and effect that goes with that, just as an example. All right, so some things the department's been working on over the last many, many years.
So just over the past several years, we have been really working on spending some time aligning the curriculums, making sure that they are up to date with the newest science standards there. We've taken time to prioritize how much time is spent in each grade level because that was something that wasn't, not that it wasn't happening, but there wasn't like a specific time cut into our schedule for science and social studies. And so we spent a little bit of time trying to figure out how that will work into the schedule and so that our kids can, can get a better understanding and, of, of science.
Can I ask a question about that while you're talking about that? When I looked at that, I, I was concerned at the second grade level that they only have science once a week.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So I'm going to back up a little bit and then I'll answer your question. I think coming in as a kind of a new teacher, I'm a second-year teacher. I started out as biochemistry major hoping to come back and teach high school and obviously plans changed and here I am in second grade. But I, I have a love of science too and I think I really wanted to share that with my students. And so to see that maybe that our district isn't there yet, but they're working to get there with the next generation science standards and working to align the Wisconsin standards along with that was a big motivator, A, to be on this department, and B, to find a path of where we're going with this too. And then when we got our new schedule this year, I think I was in the same boat as you made, Joe, that we have science 60 minutes one time a week on our day that we don't have encore specials.
have encore specials. So we, the teachers, instead of a one-hour prep time, they'll use that time for science and social studies, and they go back and forth between units, so a unit of science, a unit of social studies. And I think taking that into account as a second-grade teacher right now, like, our students love science, you know, and I think that they really, I get asked every day, Ms. Stewart, are we doing science? Ms. Stewart, are we doing science? Ms. Stewart, is it day three? It's not a day three today, but you know, in a few days, it'll be a day three again, and we get to do another hour of science. And to share that with them is a really exciting time, and I think that they're working in a direction to incorporate that more. But I also think, like, speaking to that, we try as teachers, as hard as it may be, sometimes to get into the science focus, that we try to incorporate that into other content areas as much as we can, and I think we'll talk about that a little bit more. But I think that the district is moving in the right direction as far as trying to incorporate more of those minutes, but obviously, we know that's really hard, you know, trying to get an ELA and all of those other super-important and mandatory minutes that we have. And so working with that, we're just trying our best to incorporate that as into much nonfiction as we can in our ELA, in our writing. And I know in my classroom that I do a little bit of some record-keeping and just in general, like, writing about your science knowledge and so.
Oh, there's, yes, sorry. Oh, so things that we have done to implement our science focus right now is that we, at least in the elementary K-1, are working with Mystery Science and Mystery Doug. So Mystery Doug is a short video clip that comes out Sunday nights. The kids look forward to hearing about it either on Monday or Tuesday, depending on our schedule. It is like a five-to-seven-minute video that really focuses on a question, so there are three questions that the kids get to vote on the week before, and so they're really excited to see if the question that they voted on is the one that we're going to learn about that next week. Right now, they're focused on generally what happens in the fall, seasonal changes. He throws in some holiday fun things. He'll start to talk a little bit about like space and science, and so there's all these different fun things. Then we use Mystery Science, which in the first grade level are three different units, and it just goes through, like, he lays it out for you, so you follow along with the video. There's extension activities that go off of, that the kids are so excited when we get to do those activities and that hands-on learning. We did spend some time over the summer putting together some kits, so that each classroom has that kit already ready for them, so that when we start doing the Mystery Science experiments, all of our materials are already put together, and they're ready for us to learn and dig in.
And just one other thing to add on that slide, as well as Emily was talking about trying to infuse it in English language arts as well by incorporating that content through big books, read-alouds, student books, those kinds of things as well. So definitely a work in progress, but some good progress forward, I guess. We really prioritize those hands-on experiments, and over the years, we found it to be that prep time was a barrier to getting everything gathered and organized for the hands-on experiments. And while maybe it said on paper that we were doing this many experiments, that wasn't always happening, and so taking the time to build those kits a few summers ago, and then update them every year so that teachers have what they need, that proactive has really helped to get as much hands-on science happening as possible, so. All right. Now we're going to share just a few highlights of student favorite units and things.
Do you want to do the first one?
I can. So one of Mystery Science, I think it is our second one, so coming up in our second trimester, we will talk about bird adaptation, and so it is a whole unit based off of birds and how they adapt to the environments around them. We talk about the different bird beaks and how they are able to find food, and if they cannot adapt to their beaks or their surroundings, then what happens to them if they can't adapt? So they get to do an experiment with a straw and a spoon, or a straw and a cup. And so what happens is the straw is bent in half, and it's like a little pointy beak, and the cup is cut in half, and it's like a flat beak, like a duck would have. We put seeds down on the ground, and they have like five minutes to pick up as many as they can, and then we throw marbles in on top of the seeds, and it makes it a little harder, and so then they have to decide which beak would be the best for picking up the seeds versus the marbles. They can't swallow the marbles, the bird chokes, and we kind of make it a fun little thing for them, and then at the end, we do a little assessment for them, which one was your favorite, why, and then we send home a parent packet, so that they can go home and experiment at home with the things that they would like to do. One of their favorite things for the year.
And I can speak to the second grade level and then talk about the rest of them. So right now, we just finished up our matter unit, talking about everything that the universe has created out of, and I think that's probably one of my students' favorite units. I do the Mystery Science, but I also add in, at the beginning, I do what's in the bag, and so those are very like mystery-led, I'm going to leave you hanging, and I kind of start with, Ms. Stewart's not always going to give you the answers, and you have to be okay with that, because next time in science, you might find out what the answer really is. And so, you know, what's in the bag, we start talking about properties of matter, and starting with solids, obviously a very tangible thing for them, and then we move on to liquids, and then talk a little bit about gases, and some things that you can do with gases as far as like blowing up a balloon, and actually being able to maybe put a gas into a thing that they can see, because the air around us is just there, and to them, it's invisible, so is it really there, you know? So just trying to make it as explicit and direct as you can for them. I think that was one of the barriers that I talked about most when I was student teaching in fifth grade with my cooperating teachers, was that students were struggling because it wasn't tangible enough. Students were struggling because they couldn't put their hands on it. They didn't understand it because they couldn't see it, you know, and math is very right there for you, and math and science, we know, go along together really well, so if we can incorporate science in that way too, our students can feel really successful with that. So going back to that matter unit, they talk about why do we need clothing, and what would happen if you had certain types of clothing? Why do you need sweat absorption? And if you were on a desert island? And I think just those kind of like story-working, very realistic problems for students are the things that get them the most excited. And then we also talk a little bit about space, and that's a very abstract thing to them, and so when you get to talk about space and the planets in second grade, they really get jazzed about that, because it's things that like nobody talks about them with all the time, you know? What are you doing, what are you reading? What are you doing in math? But talking about the stars, what do you mean, you know? I also tried to incorporate it a little bit with my epic books, so whenever we do stations, part of the student favorites, I assign them some books that go along with the Mystery Science units. And so a student was just reading the other day, and he said, Ms. Stewart, everything's made of matter except for light, so like the sun, you know? And I was like, wow, for like a second grader to have read that or heard that in a book was kind of, you know, extreme, and it was a little bit of a light bulb for me, and I was like, wow, like, they're really getting something out of this. And so I think, I think just those really like tangible units are the things that students enjoy the most. Third grade, they talked a little bit about when we met, that they're electric and light-bubble units, they're rocks and minerals and their fossils, things that kids get to make and take home with them and show their parents the process that they took is really meaningful for them. And so to actually have a product that they've made in the end, and they really feel like a scientist in the end, is, I think, part of what makes us some of the student favorites. And then the periodic table unit, obviously, I'm not a fifth-grade teacher, but I think the periodic table is that first introduction to really feeling like a chemist, or really feeling like you know something about chemistry, and feeling like, I can do this, you know, and I can do this kind of science-y thinking, and just being able to do that is something that they look forward to, and they're motivated by. All right, so I'll talk a little bit, and then I can let Tara finish. Field trips, so kindergarten and first grade. Kindergarten goes to the pumpkin patch, and first grade goes to the apple orchard. Second grade, they go to the Crane Foundation, and we're also taking our trip to the annual trip to the school forest this Wednesday.
We are also going to the school forest, and I think that all of the grade levels actually go to the school forest at some point. So we're going next week on Tuesday, I believe. Once we get out there, you know, the DNR is involved, so we have them come out, and they do a presentation for our kids, and they get to, the DNR goes out before, they might find prints of that are freshly new, and so we get to look at those, and he has like a monitor that can track their herd that's close by, so they get to hear where that herd is. I know that they have, or I know that the high school has motion cameras out there that they have given us access to, if we would like, so that we can see some of the wildlife that's out on the forest, so the kids can really see the things that are in our community and out at the forest, and it gets them excited about going. Our trip to the apple orchard every year is amazing. Mr. Kane has a great job with that, so we go through the life cycle of the apple. The couple weeks prior to that, we go through books in our classroom, we do apple activities, we buy apples at the, I buy apples and bring them back to school, and then we make apple pizzas with that with the kids, so they get to experience that whole baking recipe sort of thing. This year, the PTO was so grateful that they bought all of our spice forests, amazing. And thank you to them. But I think that these trips are really good for our kids, so that they can get out into the communities and see all the different resources that we have that are available for us.
I think that's just a good thing to give kudos to the K-5 staff. It's hard to take a field trip, it's hard to be out of the classroom, and you know, it's instruction in a different level, and so I think it's wonderful that they prioritize science experiments with field trips. You could go to all different kinds of fun places to help kids have wonderful experiences, but the fact that there's a science, it's wonderful that the teams have really prioritized that. And then the next piece, just wanted to share with you a little bit of hands-on experience at Red Creek, the Three Sisters Garden. And so I don't know how much we've talked about that here at the board level, but through the Earth Partnership, the Indigenous Arts and Science Institute that's offered here in Black River Falls, we've had several teachers go through it, and one of the teachers that went through it wanted, God bless you, a garden at Red Creek, and so between that training, as well as some generous donations from the community, was able to get that started.
Yeah, so I can speak to that a little bit. It's modeled after the training through the Indigenous Arts and Science Institute. It's brought on by BRF and UW-Madison through the Earth Partnership Project and the Ho Tuck Nation. We've had a number of our teachers attend. I have not personally attended, but a number of teachers in the district have. And Ms. Hall, Ariel Hall, I think does a really fantastic job of keeping the teachers, especially at Red Creek, in the loop of things that are going on in the garden, and things that we can take our students out there and really have an outdoor classroom time, and kind of dig into science a little bit deeper. They fertilize plants, they have a salsa garden, and they recently made salsa, and although I heard it was extremely hot, they put a few, they put a few too many peppers in there, but you know, it's really great for them to be able to actually taste their product that they've grown and learn a little bit about science, and obviously, we was talking a little bit earlier about the cycles and the life cycle that that plant goes through. And she also, will put stuff in our mailboxes every once in a while and say, this is from the garden, I'd like you to try this with your students, and she put some lima beans in there, and the students were like, wow, peas, and we were like, hmm, not quite peas, but, and we're like, well, we'll take a look at that, you know, and for students to be able to make a prediction about what that bean looks like on the inside, and then to be able to cut it and take it apart, and kind of dissect that bean a little bit, and talk about all the parts that are in that pod now, and what are the parts that you eat, and where did that thing come from, you know, it came from a seed. I think she just does a really nice job of helping to incorporate that into our science curriculum, and with the weather that we've had, we've been able to get out there a little bit, and she's given us some ideas about books and things that we can read that go along with the theme and the actual like background of how this garden was built, and the reason why it's in a circle, and the different quadrants that are in it. I think our students have really taken a liking to something that maybe they didn't help build, but they also still feel really connected to that, even on the second-grade level, so.
All right. So then, just, oh, sorry. Oh, shoot, I think I was talking about this for a minute. So just as far as looking forward, continuing to align our work, looking at ensuring that we have quality resources, as well as curriculum, and even time as well, and just kind of continuing to push that work forward. And then another piece for next school year, we've worked this year on realigning our report card in the area of ELA and math to really match the guarantees and the current standards, and so as a team of elementary teachers, we'll do that work for science and social studies next school year, and so those are some of our next steps. If you have any questions for us. I would like to thank these ladies again for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Share. See you. I think the garden project is always so important with every age level, just a silly thing, sharing my early childhood, we were digging carrots out, and one of the kids asked me why I put the carrots in the dirt. We'd only seen them in the grocery stores. Yeah, okay. Move on to, now, do you have anything for employee recommendations?
No, they were, of course, that they don't need your approval, so it was just in your packet for your information.
Okay. And now we move on to summer programming.
Sure, I just wanted to share with you the end result report from summer school. And if you recall, last spring, we talked about the fact that we did something different with our high school students, that they went down to WTC for a much longer stretch of the summer. It was the first summer that we changed those expectations, and we did not have a lot of students successfully complete credits, but we are really hopeful that once the word continues to spread, they'll dig into that work a little bit more. So without any high school programming, that means we lost some hours that we typically have done. If you look on the bottom, the part right above the yellow, what, the way summer school reimbursement works is it's all about minutes, and then we take the number of minutes, they divide it by, it's like forty-eight thousand, I'm not sure, but we end up with the number of full-time equivalent students that we get to add to our enrollment count, and this year, we're able to add twenty students to our enrollment count based off of the summer school programming. The second page that was in your packet is just listings, it's small to read now, but you had it available for you. Those are the offerings that we did through the year, and I will just share with you, the London Community Center also does swim lessons, and yet we've not really seen a decline in the number of kids that are participating in the swim lessons that we do as well, so I still think that's a nice community service they provide.
What is the middle school transition class?
That is a class for incoming sixth graders, and it is usually done in August, and they do things like a scavenger hunt around the school, they talk about how to get yourself organized and prepared, they talk about some of the changes from fifth to sixth grade and what that could be, so.
So all kids are participating?
All kids are welcome to, but it's not a requirement because it is in August, so it's before school starts.
Get some firsthand experience in that high school building.
Middle school.
Oh, middle school, yeah, middle school.
So just wanted to share for your information.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to I-Ready Fall Street.
All right, so I'm going to steal Jill's spot, just to share with you, as you know, we've talked before that we switched from the STAR to a new screer. Last year, the middle school did try out the HCS fire, but now we are K-8 with the I-Ready screer, and so just kind of go through. So just wanted to share a couple of key things that are different, and then we're going to go right into the portal, so you can see what the reports look like. So again, it's K-8, reading and math. We did have a little bit of a longer window of the assessment, it's actually still going on, but most students have been assessed, and so we'll look at that together. It does happen in class, it is a little bit longer than what the STAR used to be, but it is a pretty comprehensive diagnostic of their abilities in reading and math. And so just again, reminding kind of why do we do a screener, to help give that normative data, so it is a nationwide assessment, people use it nationwide, not everyone does, but it's a choice for people nationwide, so it is normed, so we can compare our students in Black River Falls in second grade to how other second graders across the country are doing. In the same way, we can look at what predictable growth should be for a student, depending on their demographics and such, to other students across the country, so. And it's important for us to have normative assessments from time to time, so that it isn't just like, oh, you think our students are doing well, or it's created by us, and so normative helps. just like, oh, you think our students are doing well or it's created by us. And so normative helps us to know that it's reliable and valid data as well as gives us that comparison. It also is a good comprehensive look at how students are doing so that we can make some decisions as to how to best support them in the large variety of skills. So a few things that are different in I Ready versus reports that you've seen from other assessments before. You're used to seeing our charts that have the five different colors. Dark green for students that are 90th percentile and above, regular green for students that are proficient at their grade level, blue has been those students that are not proficient at their grade level but are not far below grade level in the past. And then yellow in need of intervention and red in need of urgent intervention. This particular tool does have a little bit of different color schemes. So just wanted to point that out so that when we look together at the charts, we can keep that in mind. That it really does call out, so really when we're looking at our student data, it will be based on where they should be at the end of the year in this grade level where they currently. Green would be that they were, they're already meeting that goal, yellow, one grade level below, and two grade levels below if it's red. And then those are the subscale areas that are also assessed. And, excuse me, I know that we don't necessarily get to that level of depth normally with the board, but the way that the tool shows it, you'll be able to see some of those subscale areas. And we'll talk about some of those because they definitely are pertinent with what we've talked about before, different adoptions that we've had, et cetera.
Did you just say that what we're going to see is where they should be at the end of this year?
Right. So it would be kind of command of grade level standards. One of the reasons that we went to this and those on the students success committee can feel free to pipe in as well, just because we talked about that a lot last year too, this assessment is more closely correlated with the results of the Wisconsin Forward and the way that that tests and assesses. And so that really does measure progress towards where should students be in command of these standards. And we sometimes don't always see that same correlation with the STAR in the past. And so one of the things that they did moreness about with moving to this assessment is that we might notice that our scores seem lower at the beginning of the year than perhaps they did with the STAR. But if we're telling the same story about our data across the year, that certainly helps us to plot a better course of what to do about it as opposed to, oh, I think we're doing well. And the state assessment comes back and tells a completely different story. That's very frustrating. And so we wanted to stop having to deal with that. So these are just some overalls and then we'll dig into the tool and look together. So district-wide reading. So again, this is K-8, so the roll-up of all of those, but we'll go building by building. So we can take a look at that as well. So you can kind of see there, they do have, tier one would be students that are at or above grade level. And so when we think about core instruction and the RTI pyramid, we would want the needs of 80% of our students to be met with our core instruction. And so we have a lot of work to do. That is for sure. And so I don't want to sugarcoat that at all for you. And so when we think about the RTI pyramid, we should have 5 to 15% should be in need of tier three intervention. And so we are not there by any stretch. And so we will talk about some of these lower domain indicators, but those are the areas that are assessed in literacy. And we'll talk about some very different trends across the buildings and kind of what the roll-up is. And then here is our data in math. Again, very similar in that our core instruction, we want that to continue to improve so that we can meet the needs of 80% of our students. That's always our target for sure. So.
So how many times per year do they take this test?
Three. Great question. Three times. Beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year.
It's in the place of the STAR?
Correct. Yeah. So not in addition to.
So I have, should I say questions for the staff?
Uh, no, whatever works for you. That's fine.
I feel like we've gone back to where we were a few years ago. And I thought it was important to look at progress from not just proficient and above, but also proficient. And we always have had a different breakdown of the that. So it wasn't just looking at proficient and not proficient. And we don't do that anymore again. So we're kind of back to where we were about six years ago where we just looked at proficient and then those that needed assistance.
And so we have this assessment pulled into Edge Climb, which is our data management system. And we actually do have all those percentiles set so that we can still look at the five levels of data because the window hasn't completely closed yet. It doesn't close until the 25th. Was supposed to close a little earlier, but we had, they had some technical difficulties in their system. We can't pull that report until all students are in there. So then teachers will still be able to look at that data because it's very important to us to be able to know where are our students that are highest and how can we be very specific for them.
So where would we be getting that data?
When the window closes, we can certainly share that whether it's through student success committee and that can come here or.
I think moving from a median to a high is just as important as from non-proficient to proficient. And I think that, I mean, it just makes sense to look at that.
Absolutely. That's why we didn't want to lose that in Edge Climb for sure. All right. So we'll take a little look here. So this was the reading data that I showed you. We'll start by each school. You should have saved my password, Jill.
I was never going to need it again.
Never, never saying that.
I was like, no, no, no. Oh, it's Julie. All right. So taking a look at Forest Street. So some of the trends that we see, again, when we look at the building as a whole, we have a lot of students that are here in the middle. And so that really speaks to the fact that, you know, if we were to keep this trend of 11% of needing tier three intervention, that would, if we could keep that on track, that would be typical or expected that our core instruction won't meet the needs of all kids, but it should meet the needs of most kids. And so when we take a look at the grade level breakdown here, kindergarten doesn't have any students identified as of now in that need of tier three intervention. And so that tells us that as the gap, as we start to see that gap across the years, we have to continue work to change that. And so one of the things that we, I just wanted to point out that when we look across all of these, pretty similar in the need area, but one of the lowest areas, all of this yellow, the longest yellow line plus the red is in our area of phonics. And so I want to point that out just because if you remember last spring, you approved the adoption of a very quality phonics and phonemic awareness program. And so when you think about the area of reading, students learning that code is very, very, very important to reading, you know, the actual phonics piece of reading. And so it's important that they also have the comprehension, the vocabulary. And as we go up through the buildings, we'll see some change in some of those numbers. But having a good quality resource in this area, we're very hopeful that that will impact the data for students over time.
Stephanie, I just wanted to point out, if you scroll back up a little bit, when we were digging in last week, the kindergarten unit said that there's nobody in the red because of two grade levels below, they don't have that measure. So there certainly are kids, because we were looking at that last week when I was over at Forest Street doing the day-to-day. So they don't color them red because that's considered two grade levels and they don't come to this. We looked at the percentile and we certainly do have kids that if they had that measure, they would be there. So I just found that very.
So then we'll go to Red Creek. And so again, you can see that now the data does shift across the building. And when we look at per grade level, we can see this broken down as well. And we start to get a lot of either we understand phonics and phonemic awareness or we don't. And so the students that are here in this gap area, we have tracked some historical data over time prior to pushing for that adoption for the phonics resource. And we really did see that if they didn't have this before they left Red Creek, it was very difficult for them to attain high scores in the area of reading. And so not to say that we're putting all our eggs in that basket because we certainly, the data shows we have a lot of work to do in other places as well. But those reading foundational skills are supposed to be mastered by the end of third grade. And so having an explicit program that addresses that directly, we are very excited for what that can mean for us long-term. And so then here is the breakdown of the grade levels again across the way then. And so looking at these, the similarity of these percentages here, just planning for a lot of intentionality when it comes to closing the gap for students. That hope is that strategy that we have to have some plans in place. We do see in this building that vocabulary starts to creep up as a much larger need. We know that that's an area of need for students that come from families of poverty often. Vocabulary, lack of vocabulary is a need. And so through the CKLA program, there is some more intentional vocabulary work, but also something that we've started talking about in literacy meetings is something we need to be more, even more intentional around. And our data definitely shows that too. So we'll go to middle school. You can see the overall numbers there. Breakdown by grade level. And so again, when we look at this data, it's very, it's not something to celebrate. And so we certainly take seriously the work that we're doing around it at the elementary school and the middle school. Big focus for this year is really looking hard at some areas of instruction and having some pretty regular opportunities for teachers to get feedback on how those areas are going. So principals and coaches are in classrooms regularly giving them some feedback around important pieces of literacy instruction to really help impact this data as well. Any questions about the reading data? So the math overall. Again, this is all grade levels.
Stephanie, can I just ask a question about the tiers one, two, and three? So tier one is they're doing okay. Tier two is they may need some extra?
One grade level behind.
And the grade three is?
Two grade levels behind.
Two or more.
And so they have it labeled at risk of tier three. So I mean, there are tons of intervention to close that gap. Sometimes you'll hear tier one, tier two, and tier three used a little differently, but that is how this tool is.
So in the bottom, does it have all the individual, there you go, instead of skipping building.
You don't get to see the triangle, but you can at least see the progression.
So green is at grade level.
Correct. At or above. And so that is the span. And again, just to share a little bit, we know that looking at this much of yellow really does point and red really does point to our core instruction continues to need to be bolstered. And so one of the things that we have done for this year across elementary is in the past, we've had teachers engaged in the math grant that has just been one or two teachers at each grade level though. And so that definitely doesn't have the impact that we need to have effect on, to affect this kind of data. And so we are doing, all grade level teachers are involved in training throughout the year. We started that last year at kindergarten first grade, having someone come in and work with those grade levels. And so explaining that K-5 this year in an effort to really address that. And so in addition, at middle school, you guys know that we adapted or adopted a new resource. Last year was the first year of that resource. And so implementing that with fidelity and deep implementation is very important. And so we've had coaching support, a lot of coaching support last year from, directly from the company coming in and doing that again this year to ensure that we're using that tool to the best of its ability. And so that is still.
I have two questions. So students assessed in total, so the, when you look at the sign there, this would not include people who are identified with IDPs or what is the?
It would include students identified with IDPs unless it's specific in their IDP that they do not take the universal screen.
Which would be a very, very, very small number of our most significant needs.
Yep. This would be more students that have not been tested yet because the window hasn't closed yet.
Is that what the one on the, on the right-hand side is?
Correct. So 116 out of 129, there's still some kiddos that need to be tested. And so this data could change a little bit. Yep. And so we want to, we want to share with you. So. Good question. Was that both of them?
I forgot to segue on.
Sorry. I was like, did she say both of them? And I forgot.
You'll come back to me here. Oh, I know what it was, if you don't mind.
Not that.
So if we start the intervention at grade seven or eight, we, I mean, we may not see, those kids have moved on, right? So you may not really able to accept when you start them earlier. So you can follow them for at least how many years before you expect to see a result of the new tool?
With the new resource?
Yeah.
Yep. And so that is six, seven, eight. But you're right, we won't necessarily see the impact in that data necessarily right away. And anytime you adopt a new resource of any kind or a new instructional model, they usually say it's three to five years before you're going to see data move. But we also don't want that to be an excuse because we have got to, we gotta move.
I was just wondering if the kids that are now in grade three, if that new implementation is, is that taking place K-8? Or that's just middle school?
Middle school is a new resource. We've had the same resource at elementary for a number of years. And so since you're familiar with ed reports, it is, so they look at those three criteria. It is green for the first criteria of standard alignment and rigor. It is green in some grade levels and yellow in other grade levels for mathematical practices. And that's really the habits of mind that students take on as they're doing math. So knowing what equation they should use to solve it, which algorithm that they've learned, especially for word problems, but even for not, knowing that that's an example of one, there's eight mathematical practices. And so that's really been the work of the math grant is to really strengthen teachers' understanding of those mathematical practices so that they can bolster the curriculum in that area. And so that is moving this year to all teachers having access to that training as opposed to just the few that signed up for the math grant. And not few, I mean, we had 20 across elementaries most years, but that's a.
It'd be hard to know if what you're doing is working because they're moving on to.
Exactly. And therein lies everyone's challenge.
So that's where we're starting, but we hope to have some good forward progress for the year.
For sure.
Can we start about this?
A little bit more development next week.
Sure.
Thanks for letting me click around. All right, Jill, I don't want to close anything.
Do we have a student success report? We have no student success committee report. We'll move on to monthly expenditures. They were in your packet. Anybody have any questions or discussion points on that? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Good. Motion carries. Annual tax levy.
Do we want to talk about it?
Sure.
So actually, I'd like to kind of combine 9.2 and 9.3 in the whole same conversation because they're so related. Talk about the budget modifications first. Actually, the budget development is really what it is. So we counted the students, their Friday in September happened, and we counted all the kids that were here. And our FTEs were actually down a little bit from last year to this year. Even though we had this influx of 4K kids, we only get to count them as .5 or half time. So that did impact our revenue limit a little bit, but what does help us out is what's called a declining enrollment exemption. So because our two, three-year averages that they're comparing declined a little bit, the state gives us a little bit more money in the revenue limit formula to help make up for that decline so that we don't feel that impact all at one time.
Slowly step you into it over time.
So we actually had a revenue limit increase for 1920 then of $400,000 basically. We used the $9,700 per pupil, the low revenue spending district. We had 1714 was our FTEs, so resident students, 1714. We had been looking at more like 1730 to 1740. So it was quite a difference between that K through grade 12. There was a drop. It was not in any one grade. Of course, it was spread out across all grades. Joey has actually also reported to me that some of those kids are already back again. So they left, but they have come back.
I'm sorry, Friday, when we get to come for A.
Yeah. So we didn't get to count them, but they're here again. This is all things that you've already seen. So a lot of these things have been approved at the June meeting and then again at the August meeting. We had a little bit left over at the end of the August meeting. And then we also learned in August that. And then we also learned in August that we qualify for the high poverty aid. A new, it's not new, it's a state aid program, but it's something we hadn't qualified previously. They look at your free reduced percentage, basically, from the prior year. And it has to be over 50% and ours reached that threshold of District Y. So we were able to then receive some high poverty aid due to that. And then, do you want to talk about the budget proposal?
Yeah. So something that we have not done simply because of the timing of the budget and the admin meetings, all of that stuff. And so then finding out that we have the high poverty aid. If you recall of that new revenue that she just described, the 400,000, we had already agreed that 270 was going to be to do the remodeling on the transportation center. So that takes the bulk of those new funds, which left some additional dollars. We had admin meeting last week and we talked about additional priorities. And so what we came up with was an additional building aid ad at Red Creek for six and three-quarter hours. There are, if you look at the staff list, it looks like there's an awful, awful lot of aides until you walk into the building and you see the number of kids who have one-on-one, people following them. The building aid serves a different role, particularly because our special ed aides are so tightly assigned to individual students that when it comes to playground supervision, they can't supervise a whole section with 100 other students when they're responsible for, you know, one or two more significant needs students. And so they were really struggling to get any of their aides to have a lunch break and playground supervision, all of that stuff. And so a building aide does not get assigned to an individual student, but can serve that recess role so that the special ed aides can work with the students that they are most closely aligned. And so Tammy and Laura and Brandon did quite some work looking at, instead of just saying, yeah, we need another aide, they look at every aide schedule, they look at the number of minutes that they're assigned to an individual, they look at the student IDPs to see how much time they're supposed to be having. And we weren't able to meet all of the needs as accounted for in the IEP. So we are recommending adding a building aide so that we can free up the special ed aide teachers for aides' time to work with their students. Both the middle school, well, I mean, I'll talk first about middle school counselor position. If you recall, last year we moved, we had two school counselors at the middle school. And when one school counselor left late in the season, we decided to change that to dean of students position. Sorry. At the same time that we did that, we also increased the amount of classroom teaching that the counselor does. You might be familiar with the elementary model where the kids have guidance at least once a six-day rotation. When we look at the middle school and some of the challenging behaviors in students, just as they're going through so much personally, we decided that we wanted to be more proactive and instead of just doing, putting out small fires as they arise, we started teaching to each of the grade levels. So now there's only one counselor as opposed to two, and they are assigned teaching schedules quite a bit during the day, which leaves a significant void when it comes to a student who does need a counselor to talk to. And they also do the parent meetings. And so that one counselor's time is just very, 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 very tight. And so Dave first asked for a part-time counselor for the middle school. And then high school started talking about some of the significant needs. And the example that was given, so our two counselors at the high school, I believe they do everything from soup to nuts. When you think about the college planning, the ACT work, the career counseling, the meeting with the parents, the schedules, all of that stuff. They do an awful lot of that stuff. And they help with students who are in need of, yes, support is a great way to put it, thank you. So what they described was that there are times when a student gets sent out of class or instead of getting sent out, just gets up and walks out of class. And so that teacher will call the office and so then they use the cameras to try to find where that kid went. And then by the time either Mr. Saltimer, Mr. Chambers finds that student, they try to have a conversation with them. And it could be an hour and a half, two hours before that kid is back. And so it's just taking an exorbitant amount of their time. And it's not a discipline situation, it's a kid who needs to, some help de-escalating and, you know, the help of a counselor so that they can get back into the classroom and be successful. And so knowing that the candidate pool is significantly different for a full-time position than it is for a part-time, and because we had the funds available this year, and I just have to say it again, for the last 20 years, we've been in budget reduction. This was our first time in a long time where we could look at what ads can we make without having to take from someplace else. And so we are recommending a full-time counselor because we know that this is a really unique hiring window. I don't know what the applicant pool is going to look like. I don't know that someone would leave another district to come at this late date. So we would make sure that we would offer just a one, the rest of this year position so that we could repost it next year and perhaps find a deeper candidate pool. It's possible we find a fantastic person right now, but we would want to leave ourselves that out. The other is the curriculum instruction consulting, coaching conferences, curriculum materials. You just saw our data and we talked an awful lot about some of the contracted consultants that we are working with and the need for them to spend more time in the district providing that assistance. We did hire a different lit coach at Forest Street. And Red Creek is looking to have the fantastic creamer. Middle school still does not have an on-staff coach. And so we would, we've been contracting out for those services. We agreed that if we are really going to spend our money where our greatest area of need is, it is in the student success pillar, which would come from that CNI ad there. Questions, comments?
Yes. So when we're hiring personnel, that's assuming that going forward, we will have the funds to continue that.
Yeah.
And can we, do we know that?
So for the funding that we have now, the biennial budget, that was a two-year budget. So we know for the following year that we do have that. So, pardon me, 1920, we know we have it, and then we know we have it for 2021. We absolutely had that conversation, that staffing is always looking forward. But if you look at that large 270,000 for the transportation building, that's definitely a one-time expense. And so that is going to leave us with that, those funds that are not going to be allocated for next year. And so that leaves us with a nice cushion that for years, we've been terrified to add staff because of that. And this time, we feel like we do have a pretty comfortable cushion around that because of that one-time expense that we approved for the transportation.
So, you have a question?
Yes, we absolutely, that was the conversation that we had, that we are always afraid to add staff with one-time money, but it doesn't feel like one-time money.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget modifications?
So basically, you, you received this in your packet as well. It's the actual notice of those changes and how we're moving dollars around. I wanted to show you one more thing before I go into that though. I wanted to particularly talk about the tax levy and the mill rate.
Should we approve the modifications first and then go to the tax levy since they're separate?
No, because the tax levy impacts the budget modifications.
Okay, so we'll, we'll jump back to the tax levy.
You will lock yourselves in on the levy if you do that.
Yeah, I think you want to hear this first.
Okay, okay.
So I just want to give you a picture, sorry the print's so small, but of our tax levy for the past several years. We have been at, now focusing on the mill rate. It's been 945 for the last three years prior to this past year. And last year, I think you recall, we talked about doing a defeasance again and levying more in the debt service area to increase that debt service payment. Otherwise, because of the way our equalized value was, it would have allowed the mill rate to drop quite a bit. And so, but we did a compromise last year, instead of keeping it at the 945, we went to 898. We are proposing keeping it again at 898. That would be the mill rate. And you can see the factors up above, our Fund 10 levy is actually going down. But then that would mean their Fund 39, our debt service levy is going up.
So we are recommending a defeasance again for this year, particularly in light of our facility conversations. We feel like it's a very responsible and logical next step.
Any questions on those particular numbers? Because they, I have factored in, hoping that you would go along with this. I have factored those into the budget modifications for your approval. That's what you saw in the packet.
Which is why they go together. Okay. Any questions?
I'm just really glad you keep us posted so it's not like a huge surprise at the end. So I really appreciate how you do that.
And you do a good job of explaining.
Yes. Oh, thanks.
All what it is. Okay.
So I would need approval on the budget modifications and the tax levy, which are all on the same page.
Should we, we should vote on them separately though, right?
That's how they're listed.
Okay, let's start with the tax levy first then. Any questions or further comments on that? Is there a motion to approve the tax levy?
To approve the tax levy, what was it?
Eight ninety.
Eight ninety.
A second.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, motion carried. Now we'll move on to the budget modifications as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Now we'll have a little discussion about our property next to our office here.
So I'm going to start off by saying we are going to be overtime tonight, just for the record. So we've been, we're just going to recognize for a moment, we have been keeping it at two hours for a long time, but get comfortable, all right? All right. So I have been contacted by a gentleman who used to live in Black River Falls, but no longer does. He is interested in purchasing one of the three lots that you see over here. There is a house that is on the historic registry. The lock-in house, did you tell me it's green?
Yeah.
Pause it right after I turn, the greenhouse down the way.
The sheriff's department.
Yeah, yes.
He is, so the sheriff's department is trying to buy those two properties because they want to make a larger parking area across the way. And so the first house, they've already acquired, the lock-in house, they were going to demolish it. This gentleman would like to buy it and move it because it is a historical house. He thinks that it would be fantastic to just move it up the hill and to buy one of the three lots that we have here. And then it could stay in its original neighborhood where it was a historic home. My response to him was, the board has had zero commitment as to what's going to happen to that area, but there's been other conversations in the past over what possibilities might exist. And so I truly don't have a prediction for you. I just feel like collectively, I don't know that we need a long-term plan, but once we start selling lots, I think that more people are going to come looking for a lot to buy. Not that it is like super desirable park, but there's very little green space undeveloped in these couple neighborhoods. And so I will share with you that in conversations with some of the neighbors, not that I've gone door-to-door recently, but shortly after the referendum, I did go door-to-door. I delivered muffins to all of them, they said, we're so glad this is just a residential neighborhood. And so I know when we talked about the safety building being there, I did get contacted by some of the neighbors. I was like, oh my gosh, ambulance is coming. So they were not excited about that residential. I would imagine is not going to be as contentious, but, so I don't know what thoughts you guys have on it. I made zero promises and said that it was not an action item tonight, but that I would try to get a feel for what the board thought of that.
So you say there's three lots.
Yeah, and so I meant to, and I apologize. He just called last week and there was homecoming flurry, so I apologize. But he said there's three lots. He's, I don't, I don't even know if they're like rectangle going through it. I don't know what shape they are. I don't know the shape. But I, we can look it up on Jackson City mapping, I just don't know that.
That would be kind of nice to know. And then, do we know the address of this place? I'm not picturing it. I've probably seen it on our town. I'm just picturing it.
Google it, real quick. It's the first house on the corner down here. Yeah, the greenhouse.
Oh, yes.
I didn't remember it was green.
You know, we've been talking about this property at all. I don't feel like I want to start carving it up until we have a plan.
You know, I think this, yeah, the discussion, I think, needs to happen at a board development at some point. Or I don't think we can make a decision tonight, absolutely. But get more information about the size of the lots and then what we, what we want to do.
I feel like I've heard from some people that they're not interested in the conversation. So if we're already at that point, then I'm not sure that's necessary. But if, so I thought I heard two people say I'm not interested.
Interested in selling.
Well, at this point, we haven't talked about what we want to do with it. So I hate to start carving it up. You know, we don't have much land for the school district. We're really stuck. What if we need this? I don't, I don't know. We haven't made a plan yet. So I wouldn't, I'm not comfortable even thinking about carving off a lot right now.
But I don't think it hurts to get a bigger picture so that if we. Yeah, so we can, so think about, you know, think about it with all the information.
I will get the map. I'm not going to put it on next week because we really already had a full agenda for board development. But I will put it on future agenda, I know, so we can talk.
I don't think there's urgency except for that gentleman.
I agree wholeheartedly.
When we do property exchanges, is it the value that determines whether we have to have a meeting? Remember when we did property exchanges?
Anytime we are purchasing property, we always have to have that meeting on the electorate. So that has to happen regardless of the value of the property. Selling, one of the annual meeting items, I think, is that the board may sell property. So the electorate must happen if we're purchasing, not if we are selling.
I have to say, if I were only thinking about my own personal feelings, I love that it's just have green space. But I know that I'm, you know, you got to think about more than just yourself when you make a decision like that.
I'm curious about the three lots because, you know, houses are back-to-back right now. It seems like there probably are six out there or something, I don't know, or at least four.
I'm not sure, but I will look it up. I put it on future agenda item, find the lot lines for the green space. And so my first conver, my next follow-up conversation with him will be, there was not a lot of enthusiasm for the idea, but we are going to do, that's a fair statement. It was laughing, there was not a lot of enthusiasm, but we're going to do a little bit more digging into what those lot lines are and what possibilities exist. Fair enough, fair representation.
Yes.
Great.
I guess it would be nice to know what the timeline is for the county when they're going to tear down or move and build too. I know they've acquired both of those properties.
I'm not sure that we have to be beholden to their time.
No, no, I would just like to know what, what their expectations are.
Sure.
Like for, for the request, I, I think it would be nice to know that. Any other discussion on our property? Okay, we'll move on to policy committee. All of the changes that you'll see tonight, we'll just go through for the first reading. They were all recommended, discussed, and approved for full board considerations. So we'll start with the first reading on 841.
And honestly, just now, we've already talked about this summer. I talked about the process, oh, sorry, Bill.
No, I, somehow I, it got closed.
Okay. Thanks, Stephanie, log you out.
I think you have other things on the bottom, no?
Yeah, it's, I don't have them all open, just a folder had been opened and it's not anymore.
So 841, we already, already talked about that. That was just a different process for people who are seeking funds outside of district dollars. And so admin is all over that within their building. Some people have been filling out the forms, so there's no significant changes there. I would say the same about the next one, 372, student fundraising activities. All I did with this one is I added a paragraph to recognize the youth organizations who do fundraising on behalf of our organizations and just really want to put a little bit of ownership on the activities director and on the coaches to recognize, just because you're not the one signing the paperwork, it still looks like a school district fundraiser, acts like a school district fundraiser, all of those things. So we still wanted to be made aware of those because if you recall, our goal this year is just to see how many we do during the course of the year. So that was the only change there.
And the next one had lots of, lots of discussion.
Yeah, and hopefully you found the frequently asked questions helpful that I added into the packet as well. Because this was a tough one when we first started talking about it. The frequently asked questions, there's an awful lot of them, but we certainly can talk about some. The basis of the policy when you read through it is anybody who is identified as having a disability has the opportunity to have a service animal at school. Now, when we first started talking about this administratively, and I think with policy committee, we started talking like, oh my gosh, how many emotional support animals there are? I'm just going to point you right away to the end. It says, and emotionals, it says, however, neither the crime, the permanent effect of an animal's presence, nor the provision of emotional support, comfort, or companionship constitute work or task for the purposes of ADA. So if somebody says it's an emotional support animal, you're going to have to show me what your disability is and clarify what work this animal is going to be able to do for you. We talked to the policy committee and perhaps one of you would like to share. But one of our concerns was it's the perfect case of one right ends where someone else begins. So someone has a significant allergy, someone else has a right to have their service animal there. There certainly may be some modifications in accommodations, maybe changing student classrooms, maybe changing schedules. I mean, there really could be some juggling that needs to happen. But the part that is perhaps the most disappointing is that the state or the law is very clear. The only two questions we can ask under number five, Joe, if you just shuttle up just a little bit. The only two questions we legally can ask. The only two questions we legally can ask... There we go. Is A, whether the animal is required because of disability? B, what work or task the animal has been trained to perform? So I'm imagining you can all think of any other questions you would like to know about this animal that's gonna be coming to your school. Those are the only two legal questions that we can ask. It's very specific about not asking about vaccinations, not asking for certification of training, but this is directly from ADA. So, last year we had two requests for animals, but they were students that had anxiety, and so, it would've fallen under the emotional support. What I did look for, when I found the frequently asked questions, I was looking for if ADA had a list, because it specifically says "work or tasks." So I was hoping there'd be like a list of work or tasks that animals could be trained to do. It makes perfect sense, they didn't create one, because it could never be all-inclusive. Just when you say this is all they can do, somebody will train their animal to do something else, and then it would need to be added. So, that did not exist, but after reading through the frequently asked questions, I felt a little bit better about our ability to ask questions and...
Somebody can't come with their lizard hanging on them for their emotional support animal.
It's gonna have to tell us what work or task that lizard is doing.
I'll try to blow the lizard out. So, this is maybe a question you don't know the answer to, I don't know, but, so like, if an autistic kid has an animal that helps them in some way, is that considered a disability or is that considered emotional support?
It would depend on...
Or maybe that's something you don't really answer to right now?
I think that we would have to dig deeper into the work or tasks. So, a very real example, there's the dogs that can recognize seizures, or, I was gonna say the insulin, insulin levels is a very powerful one. And so, that's a very specific task or job that that animal could do. An autistic kid, a student with autism, I'm guessing, that would be to help calm them, therefore, I don't know if it's work or a task. We could talk about maybe allowing the therapy dog in some visits at some point, but not necessarily a service animal.
I think what made this come to my mind is I recently saw a video of a child with autism who would hit themselves, and the dog would make them stop hitting themselves.
Would actually block their...
Yeah.
So then that almost feels like a task.
Yeah, so then the child hugs the dog and gets his hands away from him.
And so, I just happened to see that, and, you know, we're talking about it, so...
Yeah. It makes a lot of people uncomfortable, because there are some kids who are terrified of dogs, and so, another student has a service dog, and it's terrifying. We've got, there's a younger elementary student who has seizures, and they talked last year about possibly getting a seizure dog, and that student can't take the dog out to go to the bathroom. There's, so now our staff is gonna have to, you can see how challenging it would get. So, this says that we, if the child, if the student with the disability cannot handle the dog, then the family has to provide a handler, is what is required by law. Questions or anything?
It's a long, yeah, it's a long policy to go through, so take a close look at it before the next reading on it.
It was, like, I just found it interesting, it says, "Can hotels assign designated rooms for guests with service animals out of consideration?" No. Can they charge an extra fee for the animals? No. Can they bring a service animal with them when they go through a salad bar?
Yep.
I mean, if...
That person had that lizard on, oh, what a night.
Wow.
Big one.
I don't know, but we write policy on it, so... Okay, then the other one, 871. So, this is a policy that we've talked a little bit about before, and it wasn't necessarily the policy that we felt was broken, but it was more the, sorry, the rule or the process that we would use to resolve it. And so, we took another shot at it, and first, we had separate rules for instructional classroom materials and LMC materials, and we've decided that that's kind of silly, the processes should be identical, because even if we're bringing in item in the LLC, that's still considered an instructional resource. And so, first we're gonna ask, "Oh, it's part of it." So what we did to the rule was, we tried to make it a little bit less, feel a little less intimidating to the person who has the complaint. And so, basically, in a nutshell, what would happen is they would contact the principal first, the principal would just have a conversation with them, tell them what process was used to identify the materials. Perhaps it's a misunderstanding with the teacher and it can be resolved there. If not, the principal notifies the director of curriculum instruction, who, she then calls that person, and they sit down and have a conversation together. And the exhibit, exhibit number one, that is also in there, we didn't modify that form very much, but we said, instead of that person having to do that, like, homework, they're gonna come in and they're gonna have a conversation, and through that back-and-forth discussion, they'll fill it out together. That will, perhaps, that will resolve the problem. Stephanie has said that she's had, I can't remember, two or three of these conversations during her years, and it never goes past this point, because through their conversation, they come to a common understanding and things are okay. So after that form is filled out during a conversation, if things still aren't resolved, then there would be a committee, but it's gonna be a much smaller committee, and the complainant is allowed to bring two other community people with them to try to make it, oh, sorry, a better balance between staff members and community members. Any questions or concerns with that? Alright. And then, 872, we really, I'm not sure, when you look at the policy on the website, it is called Handling Complaints About School-Related Matters, but when you open it up, it was called Complaints Against District Employees By The Public, and boy, that feels really like laser-like focused. There's a lot of things that people could complain about that are not employees. And so, we first broadened the title a little bit, and then we just defined a little bit the process that we were talking about. And really, you can see the changes in the policy. The rule, again, is where the more significant changes happen. The group, the committee did go through the rule. A lot of the prior language that was in the rule had very strict timelines to it, and we just had a conversation that if it says, "Within 15 days after the incident, if somebody came to complain to you and you looked at your calendar and it was 16 days, would you really say, 'Sorry, I don't wanna hear it.'" And so, if we are gonna have, try to resolve it no matter what, then it seems to leave the whole timelines in there. So that was the significant change to that. Anything, any of the Policy Committee wants to add, or?
Covered it well.
It will be cleaned up and much easier to read by next time. I just, the first time, I usually give it to you so you can see the changes, and then next time it'll be prettier.
Okay. We'll move on to meeting minutes. You have that in your packet. We need, those that you want pulled out for discussion or changes. Is there a motion to approve?
Do we have to do them separately, or just meeting minutes?
No. If you don't have any changes...
No.
I made a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Move on to Dr. Severson's report.
And I apologize, I have a lot of items to talk, so I'll be brief. I just wanted to highlight first, Jen Dahl, because of the role that she serves in the education world, both in our state and in the nation, she has been invited to place 24 student-made ornaments on the National Christmas tree. I think that is pretty darn cool, and so she's super excited about it, and you'll probably hear more about that later. I wanted to highlight, there is a group of people that has been talking about safe routes to school, and they've been talking about increasing sidewalks and the idea of crossing guards, all that stuff for people to be able to walk to school. Along with that, we talked about some of the challenges that currently exist, and out of that came this idea for a walk-to-school event. So on the morning of October 30th, they're gonna get together right outside here, 29? No, I...
30, yeah, 31st.
Thanks for helping.
Sorry.
Just kidding, I'm kidding. It is October 30th, we're meeting here, and there's volunteers from the community, as well as some staff members, and there's gonna be a little rally out here, and then anybody that wants to is gonna walk over to school together. The buses will still bring all the kids that are normally bused, but they're hoping that we could do it maybe once a month in spring, but just an idea to get people more active and to recognize there are ways that you could walk to school if you chose. So this first one will be supervised. On that same day, I also wanted to share with you, we've had some conversation about some of the challenges with our co-curricular code at the high school. We, Mr. Wyman and Mr. Solheim and myself have invited any parents that are interested in coming together to talk about it. This first conversation is just really gonna be, what do we expect of our student athletes? And when they're representing Blackwater Falls, what's important to us and how they represent us? And then talk to them a little bit about some of the consequences and the processes as it currently exists, and from there, a new document will perhaps arrive. So we've not had a ton of takers on that yet, but if there are any board members that are interested, you're welcome to. I just would like to know that, because we don't want the full board there, or we need to post it. And so, if you're interested in being a part of that conversation, that's happening, happening October 30th. I just wanted to highlight, because I love this park and I love the idea that our high school kids are getting this opportunity, the outdoor adventure class at the high school, they're taking overnight camping trip to Devil's Lake. They've done some rock climbing at Castle Mall, they've gone down to the ropes course, and then they're culminating that with an overnight camp trip at Devil's Lake. And Mr. Len here, who was a new fire teacher, just a little bit ago, he's super excited about it. That's one of my favorite state parks, I thought that was great. You perhaps also saw that we are doing the strategic plan update, and so, we haven't talked about that together. We, again, don't want the whole board, but it would be appropriate to have maybe one or two board members as representatives on that. I know we just scheduled a meeting for November 6th, but this is on Tuesday, November 5th, if you are interested in doing that. Right now, does anyone feel like they have a burning desire? Can I do this?
What time is it?
5:30.
5:30. We'll do a dinner. So, we will dig into that community feedback survey that we had the results from, you home as well? Excellent. Okay.
What, what covers that?
It will be here, and I will send an invite now that I know who's coming.
It's, it's on your packet material, so...
It was that last item, yep, I put them in there as optional, so. And then I also just wanted to update you, that American Education Week is coming, it's November 18th through the 22nd. There have been years in the past where you guys have done something intentional in all the buildings, and the last couple of years, you have not. I just wanted to give you plenty of time to think about it, if there was something that you wanted to do. Wednesday, the 20th, will be the Retired Educators Breakfast, which you're always welcome to attend as well. I don't, does anyone have any thoughts or ideas as to whether you wanted to do an event in each of the buildings that week, or?
That's where we came and cooked pancakes and stuff.
Many months ago. Yeah.
I thought teachers liked that.
What week, did you say that was? It is November 18th through the 22nd. We could talk about that.
Let's finalize that idea on our board development. Do everyone kinda think about that week and what, what works and what was successful in the past?
Okay. And then, one more conversation before I turn it over. So, when our employee handbook was first created, after the negotiated agreements, there was a lot, lot, lot of conversation in our district about dress code. And that was 2019, and that conversation started in 2010. I'm gonna say that fashion trends perhaps have changed a little bit in those nine years, and so, the prize that principals give to their staff very often is a jeans day, and that is incredibly motivating. We've had several asks, could jeans not holy, not saggy, not baggy, not frayed, not, could well-fitting jeans not be the exception? Could that be acceptable to wear on a regular basis? And administratively, we've had a lot of conversation, and we certainly have some varying opinions. But one thing that I would just point out, that when you look at professionalism, a nice pair of jeans and appropriate blouse or top or shirt, not, you know, hoodie sweatshirt, but appropriate shirt or top, probably looks just as, if not more professional, than the extreme number of leggings that we see. Some people wear them appropriately, and some, you know, with the longer shirts or whatever, and some people don't. And so, I just said that I know at the time, there was board involvement in that discussion about dress code, and I have no idea how you guys feel about it. Again, it's not an action item, I was hoping that we could have some conversation. Do you find jeans when paired with, you know, an appropriate top to be?
As professional as?
Here we are. Are we appropriate?
I've got jeans and boots in the ways, right?
Okay. Any other thoughts?
It is tough, because then you get people that'll...
That'll push it.
Push it the other way.
Because while I personally don't necessarily have a problem, I have heard community members' comments on how a teacher may be dressed, or feeling whether it's appropriate or not.
And so, some of the principals have tried to dig in a little bit about the shorts that they wear in the fall, and the athletic wear, when you're not a athletic, you're not a physical education teacher. And, like, when we had this discussion at admin, I said, "So if they can wear jeans, can we say hoodie sweatshirts are, if you have recess duty but shouldn't be inside?" And...
It's a slippery slope.
It gets messy. So, I just said that I know the board was part of that conversation then, and I didn't want to make a decree without any feedback from the board.
I prefer emojis, but, I don't like fashion too, but I think how you dress says something about who you are, and we're providing an example for kids and how you behave as a professional, and dress is part of that. It always used to be, I guess it's less than it used to be. But I think there's all different kinds of jeans, and who's gonna please which kind? And how tight they can be, and is there gonna be shorts in or out, or tucked, or belt, or no belt, or?
No skinny jeans.
Yeah. So maybe we should add a dress code.
I think we should talk about, there's colored jeans, and they, you know, you look in the stores, there's...
People pay a heck of a lot more for a pair of jeans than they do the leggings that they wear quite freely now.
I see leggings.
Well, I feel like leggings should be a part of that conversation, right?
Oh boy, if you wanted to dig really far into a dress code conversation, then we should probably engage some staff in that conversation as well. So if that's your wishes. I just, I was not comfortable making that decision without talking to you, and so, I'm hearing that there's more to discuss.
So, is there anything about what, like, at the hospital, dress code, you can't wear jeans, and you have, if you wear leggings, you have to wear a long top. Do we have that?
We allow people to wear jeans on Fridays, and then they donate a dollar, and then we give it to different charities. There are some physicians, like our tech ed teachers might wear jeans more often.
Well, no, I'm talking about the leggings and the top that you mentioned, is there not...
Don't specifically say that.
We don't say that.
It says business casual.
It says business casual. It does not spell that outward, but it says business casual.
Yes, leggings are kinda new in the past 10 years.
That was my point, that there are, yes, jeans can be dressed up or down, as can most anything.
And the shorts and the athletic wear, it's...
Yeah, and you don't wanna take away from the administrators either. They address the professional development with them, with professional behavior and demeanor, and that should be a part of their conversation, is their professional wear, what they wear to work. That should be an administrator's decision. And I think school board digging into that level is not where we need to go. I mean, I always thought it was silly that I had to wear pantsuit and tie over at the prison when I worked out in the yard. You know, I'm in a prison, a tie to me is a weapon. I thought it was just ridiculous, but, but I was in charge of supervising 35 people, and I had to address whether or not their professional wear was something that we had to discuss. We sent people home because it was inappropriate for a prison setting, but I think that's an administrative position. But I guess we can talk a lot more as a group, we want to. We don't wanna take away from the role.
Is that something that perhaps the, our people committee could have on their agenda to?
We certainly can.
To get their feedback, too?
I can almost guarantee the teachers are gonna say, "Yep, we're all in." I can almost guarantee. I mean, truly, they ask frequently. I guess, so, if, let me phrase this correctly. If it's just a jeans conversation, there's no need to go back to staff and ask their thoughts on it, because it's gonna be yes. If you guys want to broaden that into talking about more of the other dress things, like you started rattling off, then I feel like we do need some input from the other side, because I would feel badly if this group right here sat and said, "That's unacceptable O's, that's unacceptable O's." I mean, those were contentious conversations when we created the handbook, and so, I would not want that with all the ARPEOPLE. So, I, and again, it is yours to discuss or not discuss, I just don't wanna have, I don't want this group to go way into all manner of dress without including the staff.
So, Shelley, does it really matter how anybody dresses anyway? I mean, does it matter?
Yes, because I would be disappointed if there's a staff member up there looking like some of the kids you see at the middle school, high school, with the holes every other place, you know? I mean, that would be disappointing to me, and so, I, I mean, honestly, I would use, as an example, you're wearing jeans with a blazer, enjoy it, and that looks just fine. I mean, I don't know that this material would make that look any better or worse. So, I do think, I do think it matters, I really do. It matters for our kids, we still hold them to some expectations when it comes to manner of dress. I just think that there are some people who have some old-held beliefs that jeans immediately mean casual. When I go back to, there are people spending a lot more on jeans than they do on a dress for a wedding, or whatever, so, I just...
When I went to school here, we, the boys, we had to wear dresses all the way through high school. No matter what the weather, you wore dresses. So, things have changed.
You walked uphill, too.
No, both ways. But, you know, but jeans were not allowed, because they had rivets, and they ruined the furniture, you know? So, there's a lot, it's...
Jeans have changed over the years, how you feel about it.
And jeans were what you only wore when you were farming, you know, I mean, it was...
Yes, they're more for work, for...
Right, so things do change, I recognize. I, so that's why I asked the question, I really don't know what matters anymore.
That's a tough one, with parameters on. But I'm not hearing an overwhelming, "Yeah, let 'em wear 'em, release the restrictions." Okay?
The kinds of jeans and what is exposed, I remember having a conversation a long time ago about belly buttons and butt cracks. I mean, really.
I'm done with my report.
So, when you get into that kinda stuff, no, it's not, it's not appropriate. But we expect that of our students, too, where we can't have items showing, right?
Exactly. They just knew I didn't wanna have this conversation. So, the way that it went, they can all say, "Sorry, Shelley, you were right." That's all that's happening right now, just so you're all clear.
All right.
So, I am done, and it's time for the principals.
So, you guys go ahead.
I don't know what else we could say to that. I think elementary is gonna call it good with the signs, and you put my tube big, no, I'm just kidding. No, I will have Jen do lots of photos to share those bulbs are like this big, and she's incorporating all kinds of culture, or the Black River Falls, like Turner Blue, there's gonna be Hoop Brook Avenue, there's Greenberry, it's just amazing. She put a cube on the inside, so that she could add more sides to the artwork and get more kids involved. But typically, it's only for middle school, high school teachers that get this honor, but she is the Wisconsin rep. There's 56 teachers chosen, and so, that's going on her, so we'll make sure there's lots of photos, and I was doing some digging, they will send the district photos of our spot, and so, yeah, super exciting.
That'd be fun to go to.
It wouldn't be fun to go, it's just...
I don't think they allow jeans.
That's true. No more jeans, all our dress.
Middle school, high school, Dami, anyone?
I could go.
All right.
Twice during the month, I meet with all of the assistants, and so, in October, September and October, in September and October, I had all of the assistants together, and I use Fair Park School, so they come over there, and it's about 55 people, and so, Kyle turned on a presentation about vaping and the effects of vaping, and based on that, we now have a task force and some things going on, but it was very informative, and it was well-received. And then, the second time he came, he did one on internet safety, and really looking at, and it was really informative, because I'm sitting there going, "Oh, my gosh." And everybody grabbed their phones, because he gave us so much information about when you take pictures with your phone, and different things, and so, we had two really, really wonderful presentations by him so far this year, and it was great networking with the entire group. The next couple slides.
Oops, I went to cream.
That's okay, that's okay. The Nexus Boys, those are Cranberries, the Nexus Boys have been going on a lot of different field trips and things associated with our science and social studies, and then looking at possible jobs. And so, they've gone to the Cranberry, to Bible's Cranberry Marsh, they went to Kane's Orchard, they went to, wait, that looks like the cave, Crystal Cave, and they got to see a lot of different things at the cave. They went to the fish hatchery in Genoa, they've gone to the, oh, boy, the lake, now it's escaping, right? Wazi, Lake Wazi, not being too serious, so Lake Wazi. So, they've gone on a lot of different things and experienced a lot of different job possibilities, and really just kinda looked at some science and social studies things. So, every Friday, we try to get out and take them out, so, there's some things to mark.
And this is the last Friday you'll be able to come to Nexus Boys, because there's a girl joining them, right?
Possibly.
Okay. I just heard the Nexus Boys, and I thought, okay, so I'm training. All right, it's next.
Along the heels of our Director of Special Education, I'll share with you what our FIA teacher, Kelly Shelby, volunteered for me the other day. A couple weeks ago, they, her FIA classes had an ability awareness day, and they discussed what disability means. You can't always see if somebody has a disability. And so, they did some, some activities in FIA class where they would simulate, they played a game called hole ball, as played by the visually impaired and blind, and they simulated what it would be like without missing a limb, and they also built a tower to try and understand dyslexia a little bit. They built, they built a block tower with directions given to them backwards. So, the kids really had a good time with it, it helped broaden their understanding of what disabilities are, and Mrs. Shelby really thought it was a good activity to do in FIA class. Just going to share also that volunteers from Co-op Credit Union were in the building last Thursday all day, and I believe our school counselor, Esther Wivel, coordinates all that, along with Sarah Anderson, who was here last year from Junior Achievement. She was a Junior Achievement now, she won an award for that. And they did an eighth grade science and social studies application called It's My Future. So, they talked about career mapping, personal branding, and job hunting, and Ms. Wivel went on to say, it's been a wonderful partnership, as it really has been, with Co-op Credit Union and their volunteers coming in to talk to our kids. And last but not least, on Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM, we're going to have an all-school assembly on the dangers of vaping. Now, that, as you all are likely aware, that's been a, it's grown in the middle school and high school usage. And so, we, in the tent, we brought in the rest of our staff from Leckard, we're going to host, we have Kate Schlemm, and Kim, and Lisa Anderson, to do a presentation on it this morning, informing parents about it, and then sending out school communication, but I didn't say they couldn't come either, so, and we only seat five, 600 in the theaters, almost 400 from school kids. We can probably have quite a few parents, but nobody's taken me up or asked to come in for that, so, I look forward to that on Wednesday morning, and hopefully, educating kids more on the dangers of vaping.
All right, since it's a long meeting, I've only got about 15 minutes that I gotta discuss. You know, in high school, really quick, first, I wanna say that I, too, was really pleased with the way the homecoming, not only the whole week, but especially the game win, with all the events celebrating the Ho Chi Minh culture. I wanna thank Tony Berger again for that, as well as the Wachik Club, the Student Senate, the Ho Chi Minh Language Class, as she demanded, and all the people who helped make that a real successful event. And since we're talking about homecoming, I also, we're getting closer to the end of the fall sports season, and with a brand-new football coaching staff, a new athletic activities director, things started out pretty rough for the athletics this fall, but my goodness, we're now going to, going to Baldwin Woodville this Friday, and hopefully, gonna keep the winning streak going on with football. We have a number of kids who did really well in the cross-country. Conference meet last weekend, and they're going up to sectionals this weekend. We have a golfer who was named as an academic, all-academic athlete, Jenna Quackenbush, and so, just some really fantastic things in our sports groups this fall that didn't really seem that wonderful when the season started. It's nice to end the season up that way in positive ways, so. Then, we've got the ACT pre-test coming up on Wednesday, and we are looking forward to getting those juniors ready for the ACT in March.
Did they behave themselves for homecoming, the kids?
For the most part, yes.
I received one negative phone call, and Chris handled it almost immediately, and, yeah, I don't know if you received other negative, but not much at all. My yard was hit more so this year than the six years I had a high school kid, which I don't really understand, but I didn't sign up for the no-hit list, so.
I've heard people talking about downtown, I like it. It makes me smile, but I don't know how the downtown felt.
That was the one complaint.
And, and it was a business owner who had agreed to let the shoe litters paint on their
door, and then when there was some toilet paper in the trees, but Chris went down.
Yep, all good.
It kinda felt like the whole downtown was decorated with some toilet paper and trees.
It was well done. Okay.
We're hosting the WASB meeting tomorrow with our neighboring school districts, and so, we'll be there.
Remind us what time you'd like us there?
If you're in for the training, that starts at 4:00, otherwise registration is at 6:00, dinner at 6:30.
Okay.
At the high school.
I was saying, you should wear jeans.
Did you say that, too? I think I... There are pre-talkovers with the dishes where jeans can make with our make, just so you guys know. When we have admin meeting, I think they look at me like I'm crazy, I'm like, they have opinions, too. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
One second.
All in favor, say aye. Thanks for your time, everyone.